My clock on my phone says it's 6 o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. February 22nd, 2018, meeting of the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission called to order at 6 o'clock. When Viviana stops rolling chairs around, we'll call the roll.
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
I'm here.
Patrick Connell?
Here.
Sue Ann Frugé?
Here.
Cynthia Lee? Cheryl Lee?
Here.
Matt Lassen?
Here.
Diana Rose?
Here.
Alyssa Halli-Schram?
Here.
Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
Richard Gardner?
Here.
All members present, even in this messy weather. Thank you all for coming. Item number two, citizen comments. Comments will be heard from the audience on any topic not listed on the agenda, not to exceed three minutes in length. To address the commission, please submit a fully completed request card to the commission secretary prior to the beginning of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, if a citizen discusses any item not on the agenda, the commission cannot discuss issues raised or make any decision at this time. Issues may be referred to city staff for research and possible future action. Are there, is there anyone here who wants to make citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to items for individual consideration. 3A is consider action to approve meeting minutes from the January 25, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. If all had a chance to read it, are there any additions, corrections?
Motion to approve as is.
Second? Been moved in seconding? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unanimously approved. We'll reset the regular meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission and reconvene into a workshop to discuss draft subdivision ordinances that we've been waiting for with bated breath.
I'm sure you did.
Mr. Gaddis?
And actually, last time we talked, you all were complaining that I didn't give you anything to read, so I gave you something to read.
You fixed that, didn't you?
Yeah. I have kind of a rule of my own to not have anything over 100 pages, but I failed here. You need to have a lot of information in there. One, a reminder that even though it's gonna be informal, make sure that you have your mic on when you talk, because the people on the video are watching, so they need to be able to hear what you have to say. Also, just a reminder to where we're at and where we think we're going. One, you know, part of the delay was getting the city attorney's review comments. I got his comments on the first third of the ordinance a few weeks ago. He has not reviewed the second, third thirds, but the first third was the one that had all the legal stuff in it, so I feel comfortable moving ahead. The rest of it's more engineering and planning oriented, so that's why I felt comfortable bringing it forward to you. Even though I know it's out there in the public domain on the webpage, I haven't really released it to the public yet, because I wanted to wait until we got the meeting with the city council. And, you know, they were trying to schedule a joint meeting between you all and them. To my knowledge, that time, that date, time has not been set yet. I know they were looking at early March, but early March is coming pretty quick, so...
I've been a little busy lately.
Yeah, I've been, yeah, sidetracked on some issues. So, what I brought to you tonight is the first, kind of official first draft of the ordinance, and what I thought we'd do tonight is kind of go through it. My expectation is it will go at kind of a high level and mainly talk about policy issues, and I have some questions to raise that I need some direction from you all, and avoid getting into the wordsmithing. If we get into kind of arguing about every single sentence, we'll probably be here much later than you want to be. I think you all were provided by email copies of it in Word format, so if you want to just mark it up or send me a hard copy, I'll be happy to try to incorporate your comments. I will also note that it's still a work in progress. In fact, what I'm gonna show you, I have been making additional comments since the version that went out to you, since what goes out to you has to be put in, you know, over a week ago. So, I am still going through it and scrubbing some issues, and I finally got Wesley's comments earlier this week, and so I've incorporated those into this as well. There are still some things that we still need to resolve, so it's not a final document, but I wanted to make sure that you had a chance to give me your input, and we'll continue to be working on it as we move forward.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
As we go through this and we get down into the bushes, into the weeds, and start talking about those sentences and the like, is there a plan for public input and meetings with the public?
Yeah, yeah.
Before we even go any further, I'd like to know what that plan is.
Yeah, that was the one, a big part that I forgot to leave out. Once I have a chance to brief the council, and the plan is to do that as part of the joint meeting with you all in the council, then we'll go out to the public. In particular, I want to get some stakeholders involved, the surveyors and engineers and developers. I also promised the county that I would coordinate with them, since they also regulate subdivisions. So, we're probably gonna at least a month after that in order to get public input, and then we can decide. My initial impression or thought would be to do those as kind of informal stakeholder meetings during the day at staff level. We can record those and make sure that you know that, unless you would prefer to have just an open public meeting some night for you to listen to what their comments are. But again, I'll leave that up to you all.
I think we've had some questions arise at some subdivisions about things that they didn't know were, had been approved and part of their subdivision for a long time. There was some concern about drainage issues and what is being done to help ameliorate that in future construction, so that we don't become a bowl like Houston. So, I don't know at what point, but at some point, I would like to have some evening meetings for those folks at work, nine to five.
Yeah, okay, well, we can do that. And also, remember that when you finally adopt the ordinance, you will hold a public hearing, so the people have a chance to do that. But we can do some informal public meetings.
If we do, if we only have one public meeting, public hearing, I'm afraid on a document this thick, we might be there forever. I'd like to hear what the other commission members feel, too.
So, I think it would be nice to do a couple, at least two informal meetings, with, one with stakeholders and then the other with the public. I mean, either one can come to either meeting, but with the target being and getting it out there, you know, social media and then making a real big point to put it out there so we can get people here.
Sure. And actually, I had promised the Bastrop newspaper that I would provide, actually, it was Mary at the time, that information, once we got to a point to release it, but I'll work with her successor. So, we'll get as much notice out as possible, our webpage, Facebook, et cetera. So, better to get everybody out there yelling at you all at one time that we can kind of respond to. It's, we don't want to wait till after it's a done deal and then people start complaining.
Well, exactly, and I'd like to be able to have the public address us prior to a meeting where we're going to vote on it.
Sure.
And so, I think that would be, so we can make any comments or suggestions before, five minutes before the vote.
Sure.
Yeah, if we have folks here ahead of time, hopefully, they won't be yelling at it, at us, when it comes time to approve something.
So, we'll play it by ear to see whether it's logical at your next meeting to set aside time to do that, or whether we want to call a special meeting, but I'll work with you to decide how we want to proceed with that. So, like I said, what I want to do is kind of go through it. I'll go fairly quickly. You'll see some markup in here, which is changes that I've made since the version that I sent in the packet, but I, in most cases, I don't know that we'll need to talk about it. A lot of it's just grammatical and insure instead of insure and things like that. But if you got questions, stop me as I kind of scroll through, and we'll proceed from there. So, as I mentioned early on, a big part, well, a big part of the ordinance was to just reorganize it. Your current ordinance is kind of hit or miss, and there's places in there duplicated three times, and yet it's not the same in all three places, a lot of confusion. So, what I've tried to do is try to reorganize it into what I think is a logical flow to the ordinance, so that somebody could, if they're looking for something, they know where to find it. I also mentioned to you that, you know, subdivision decision is a ministerial act. You don't have a lot of discretion, so if you want to turn something down, you want to make sure that you have something in your ordinance that you could base that on. Otherwise, you are required by law to approve it. So, I know it's a lot more information that you probably think you want to have in there, but there's a reason that that's all in there. First part is just talking about authority and jurisdiction and the fact that you have authority in both the city limits and your extraterritorial jurisdiction. And just a reminder to you all that you all have three flavors of ETJ. You have a statutory one-mile ETJ, in which we fully regulate and inspect subdivisions. The reason for that is that the intent would be that someday you would probably annex those. You want to make sure all the public improvements meet your standards, because you will have to take care of it. We have a lot of voluntary ETJ. In fact, your city probably has the most voluntary ETJ that I've seen in a long time. It was done in the eighties to prevent Austin from coming in. And so, between the county and the city, they've kind of divided that area up. We've got an area where the city reviews the subdivisions, and then the remaining area, the county reviews the subdivisions. So, anyway, that's all kind of addressed in here as well. This is all pretty close to what you've already seen. I do want to point out on waivers and exceptions, your current ordinance talks about variances to the subdivision ordinance. I've changed that to waivers and exceptions, because most people confuse a variance with that of a zoning variance, and a zoning variance with the ZBA has very specific criteria they have to meet. And it, you know, if somebody wants to build a six-inch curb instead of a seven-inch curb, and they want a variance to that, the criteria for granting a variance through the ZBA, it just wouldn't apply. So, this makes it simpler. You could make the choice of whether, yeah, a six-inch curb is fine, and we don't need a seven-inch curb, those kinds of minor items. I put all the dedications in there, particularly the parkland dedication. Your ordinance already provides that as development occurs, the idea is that that will demand additional parkland, so we require new developments to give land for parks. Or if they don't give land for parks, that they pay a fee that we can use to buy parkland. That's pretty much kept intact. There's a few areas a little further down in terms of you have a trail dedication and some other dedications that are not quite covered under case law, but I've kept those pretty close to what you have now, except trying to clean things up, so they make more sense. And pardon the blank spaces, because I've added stuff in here. I'm not a fan of Bill Gates when it comes to Microsoft Word, because Word wants to do what it wants to do, not what I want it to do.
David, I've got a question for you on, when you're talking about parks and zoning. You've got a section there that allows builders to opt out and pay money in case of that?
Right.
How are we gonna manage that animal?
Actually, the way it's written is that in most cases, it's the city that decides whether the developer can opt out or not. The presumption is they're gonna dedicate land, but sometimes it may be that the land that they want to give us, we don't want, or it's too small a piece that it's not worth anything to us, where we'd rather have the funds. We'll tell you that not now, but sometime down the road, we may want to reevaluate the park dedication policy. Every time that we get more parkland, we've got to maintain more parkland, and so the city's kind of wrestling with how we do that. So, there might be some tweaks to this further down the road. Right now, the intent is that developers are required to dedicate parkland unless we don't want what they want to give us. Let's see. And the park standard is one acre for every 100 lots that are created in a subdivision, so if a developer comes in with 100 lots, he has to give one acre of land. That's fairly standard around the state. It ranges from 50 to 200 lots per acre, and so 100's kind of in the middle. There's the money in lieu of section. Comprehensive plan. Because they're giving money, it goes into a special fund. It doesn't just go into the general fund to be spent on other stuff. It is dedicated specifically for buying parkland. We have made a slight change to allow it for park improvements and some maintenance, but the idea is it's intended for capital improvements, not for just funding the park program. You know, most developers are happy to give you the floodplain, because they can't do anything with it. Whatever, the way I've written it in here, and you all know that the floodplain is divided into two parts. There is a floodway that's in the middle, it has to be kept free of any obstruction, so that there's no more than a one-foot rise. Basically, can't be developed. And then there's a floodway fringe. So, the way this is set up is, yeah, we'll be happy to take the floodway, but we're not gonna give you any credit for it. We'll take the floodway fringe, but we'll only give you half credit for it. We'll take anything outside the floodway fringe at a one-for-one basis, because we can use that for other things. Most of this is from your greenways, trail system, linear parks, that's basically what you have now. I think we may end up revising that a little to make it more legally, strengthen it legally. Special trail system, then just requirement to dedicate for schools, whatever BISD wants. And that simply because they want to give us something, we've got to agree to accept it. It's a two-way street. All right, any questions on the first part? Second part is definitions. I have had-
I did have one question. Sorry, I scrolled back and took my- There's a, there's a section here under plating required, towards, on page two. And the way I read it is that, so we're now making it unlawful, or we're continuing to make it unlawful to transfer possession of lots, but the way I read this is it would apply to lots already in existence, so somebody that had a lot that's a legal piece of property, just legal under the city's ordinance, could not transfer title to that property.
No.
And they'd have to make it a legal lot before they do that, or am I reading it wrong?
It's to build something on that that triggers the plating requirement.
Okay.
It should be the city's goal to have every lot in town platted.
Right.
And the reason is because you get much better property records that way, as opposed to, particularly in your town, you know, starting at the old Bodark tree and going ten veras, you know, having the plating, it's a survey quality that we can actually know exactly where the property is. Your current ordinance allows people to build on what are called lot of records, so that if the lot was legal as of the time the original subdivision ordinance was written, which was-
1981.
We have treated those as legal lots and have allowed people to build on those. That doesn't get you toward the goal of having everything planted. The more important thing is, we want to make sure people are not selling off part of their lot to somebody else and then trying to build it, because that is by definition a subdivision and needs to follow this process.
Right. So, if somebody has a lot that was, was, it's not a legal lot, so after 81-
It was divided.
It was divided.
Right.
But it's, but it's a, but it's a recorded piece of property. Like, it's illegal in the sense that they can't develop on it without coming to the city, right? They could still transfer title to that.
If it was recorded at the county-
Right.
And you're saying they split it since then?
Right. If I, if I subdivided something, if I bought something that was subdivided in 85-
Right.
And I want to turn around and sell it now, but it's considered an illegal lot, are we, the way this is written, are we preventing them from selling that or just developing on it then?
Well, what it does is that we would not issue a building permit until it was properly platted.
Okay. So, they could still transfer title, they just couldn't do anything with it?
But legally, what happens is that buyer, when they find out they can't build like they thought they want to build, they may come back on the seller and say, hey, you didn't sell me a legal piece of property.
Right.
But no, we don't get involved in land transfers and land sales. We often don't find about lot splits until the county puts out their new records.
Well, that's, that's where it's, it shall be unlawful for any owner to sell or transfer. That's where I started reading going.
Yeah. The reality is, we don't regulate, I mean, we're not a party to that. What we are a party to is issuing building permits.
Right.
And that's where we usually catch those.
Okay. Very good. That was it.
Okay. Definitions. I probably doubled the amount of definitions that was in the previous ordinance, but I tried to make sure that everything that needed to be covered is covered. I will let you know that one of the edits that I will be doing sometime soon is I will be going back through the definitions, and if there's a term in the definitions that we don't use in the ordinance, we'll take that definition out. But I want to make sure that everything that you needed to have defined is defined. And I think for the most part, that's fairly explanatory. I will tell you, I did add a definition of channel sinuosity. Don't want to get too detailed into engineering. Actually, it's river geomorphology, and this is Wesley's comment. He, purpose of this is that when you design a straight channel, drainage channel, yes, it gets water away from the upstream end fast, but then ends up dumping it on somebody downstream faster. And the idea is to more accurately mimic natural meanders, which will help slow the stream down, and so he's requiring as part of the channel design that we put some of that meander back in, and that's measured by sinuosity, which is the relationship between the center of the, or it's actually the lowest flow line of the channel, which is called the thallwig, and the point-to-point distance. So, if you had a straight line and then you had a curvy part, you divide those two distances to come up with channel sinuosity. There's really exciting stuff in here.
It is. I have a question on that.
Okay.
No, actually, the question comes later on in the story, but since you're kind of talking about drainage now, you know, one thing is, I had a hard time really dissecting out, possibly intentionally from this, how, say, residents and commercial corporations would be treated differently. Here in the city, like, say, someone who has a tax exemption with the state, the homestead exemption, how their personal property might be treated differently, but that's a different question. But it gets down to, when it talks about the maintenance of the floodways, you talk about how the developer is responsible to maintain the stuff that they put in. It also talks about in areas where creeks cross personal property, like, say, a homeowner, and it specifically says in there that the owner is responsible for maintaining that floodway. I guess in the sense that we've had several floods here lately, what's, why wouldn't the city take responsibility for maintaining the actual floodways, even if they cross personal property?
It depends on whether there's a drainage easement dedicated, and there's not always drainage easements where-
So, that's not something the city can go and take a hold of?
Not without going through, paying money or getting condemnation.
Okay, so we can do it. So, it's either rely on homeowners to maintain the drainage-
Right.
And then, if there is a flood and it's someone's fault, that everyone can sue that homeowner, and the city stands by and says, well, it's in our ordinance that you had to maintain it, or we go after it, right?
Right. The idea is that in most cases where we improve the channel, we will get the drainage easements, and then that's when the city responsibility kicks in. But we can't be responsible for every creek everywhere, even when, even when we don't even have legal authority to get on the property to do the work, so that's the distinction.
But the city could go after that if they wanted it?
If they wanted to go through the process of trying to acquire an easement from whatever means, yes.
Yeah. Is there, do we have a process for that currently, or is that not?
Well, it's usually a project by project. When we do a creek like Gil's Branch, they'll have to acquire drainage easements, and once they approve the channel, then the city will take on more authority to keep that maintained.
And do you generally find that people are willing to give up that right?
Some are and some aren't. Some see the city coming and want to know how much they can get out of it, so, you know, I would like to think everybody would see the benefit of it, would be more than willing to donate, and 80% of the time, that's what happens, but there's always the few holdouts. Some of that's just grammar. I tell my students to, you know, keep it simple, and a lot of people say, well, in order to do something, when you could just as easily say, "to do something," in order doesn't add anything to it other than words. And maybe that's what they're doing, is they're trying to pad their document. Okay. Then we get into the administration and acknowledging the P and Z, and talking about your roles and responsibilities, referencing back to the charter and the zoning ordinance, because it turns out that, you know, a lot of your authority actually comes from the zoning ordinance, not the subdivision ordinance. It talks about what you can approve and not approve, talks about hearings. A lot of people don't realize that state law, with a normal plat approval, there's no requirement to have a public hearing. Reason is because it's a ministerial act. The public really can't sway you one way or the other. You either find that it meets your requirements or you don't. So, in fact, a lot of cities don't have public hearings on most plats, but by state law, you are required to have a hearing if it's a replat of a residential subdivision, and that's treated kind of like a zoning change. The thinking is that you bought into a subdivision thinking it was gonna look a certain way, and for somebody to come in and change that kind of changes your rights in that community. So, that's the one requirement. Now, a lot of cities still do public hearings, or at least open up for public comment, just as a courtesy to the public, and I like it, because the public sometimes knows about things that you may not know about, so it's good to get that input, but there's no requirement to have a public hearing, except in that one situation. Oh, a little bit of Rosenberg's rules. Official records. Duties of the city manager, which is basically to make sure that the council receives the recommended engineering standards that need to be adopted. And that's one change from your current ordinance. Your current ordinance kind of implied that the city manager could adopt rules. We have changed it to make sure that the council adopts those rules, because that makes it much more enforceable. Remember, council's the one that's elected, city manager wasn't elected. Director of planning, what his or her role is. City engineer, what his or her role is, and the city inspector. Fees, we've referred back to the appendix A of the fee schedule. We've taken out all specific fees that are in here, or tried to, and we're putting all the fees for the city in one location, so if you've got a question about a fee, you don't have to look through a bunch of different ordinances to find out what they are. They're all in one location. Oh, reconsideration of plats, finality of decisions, violations. We have referred back to a specific violation section in the front part of the code of ordinances, rather than trying to include it in every single ordinance. Actually, I kind of expected the city attorney to talk a little bit more about this section, but he thought it was in pretty good shape. All right, plats. Unless there's any other questions.
I did have a question. So, I'm making sure I read this right. So, are we, are we moving authority for plat approval to the commission without, they don't go to city council after that, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Unless they're, they want to appeal whatever we cited on, is that?
And there's really not a lot of room for appeal. They can only appeal certain things.
Right. Right, okay.
Council can delegate authority to the commission, but then they can't pick and choose and say, we want to review this one or that one. It's all or none, so-
Right. So, we're moving that-
We're moving to, completely to the commission. We're moving to, completely to, the commission. And so far, they've been good with that, so... I hope that you all are good with that. If you don't want that authority, now's the time to speak up. General procedures, about how you review... We review plats, and you remember from the first workshop, we talked about changing the process, that we're going to create what's called a sketch plat, where we do some preliminary determining, one, where it's located, what kind of plat it is, what kind of process it goes through. And that clarifies to the developer what process to use. Right now, all those different processes are just kind of scattered throughout the ordinance, and we've got developers that come in under one process, and they really should be under a different process. This will kind of clarify. Everybody knows. And most everybody does what we call a pre-application meeting, and so that would be the time that we would go through all of that. And there's that pre-application meeting. Classification of subdivisions. And we would classify it as a standard plat, a short-form plat, an administrative plat, or a residential replat. And then we talk about each of those different kinds. Short-form plat... A standard plat is kind of what you usually see. There's, you know, a large number of lots, they're building a lot of infrastructure, and for that, we require a two-step process. They first do a preliminary plat, where we look at things like topography and drainage and stuff like that. The final plat... The plat itself is more a legal document showing what the lots are, and then behind that are the construction plans for all the infrastructure that are going by. But it's that two-step process, because we want to make sure that we catch all the issues before we get to the final stage. Now, there's some cases where it may be simple enough that we don't have to have a preliminary plat, so that's what we call a short-form plat. So rather than going to the preliminary plat stage, you can go straight to the final plat. You know, it may be just a few lots, or it's not, nothing real elaborate, then, you know, the idea is that we can try to make it simple for different developers. You have the authority to have different requirements for different development types. In fact, you actually have the authority to not require anything at all. You know, I mean, you could let anybody divide whatever they wanted to, if you wanted to. But that causes... You can imagine the problems that causes. So, but we've got a different standard. We've tried... We have a two-step process for the complicated ones, and a one-step process for the easier ones. This talks about the different kinds.
Who decides if it's complex or not?
That happens at the sketch plat stage, and that's actually the staff. Now, the developer, I guess, could argue that, and in that case, we would bring it to you all to make that decision. But in most cases, they're not going to argue that. We do have an administrative process. State law allows the staff to actually approve plats. If they're, you know, four lots or less, and they're not dedicating any rights-of-way easements, and there's no infrastructure, I mean, it's pretty easy. Remember that plating is a ministerial process. All we do is check the rules. If they comply, you approve it. Those, the staff can actually approve, instead of coming to you all, and so that kind of speeds up the process. As an example, we had somebody in Tahitian Village that divided their lot up, and then they built a fence somewhere else. So they're coming back now with an amended plat, an administrative process, to actually replat, to move the property line over to where the fence is. It must be a pretty expensive fence, because I thought it would be easier to move the fence, but that's the process they're going through. We talked about replats and residential replats. Most replats will come as a either administrative process or a standard process. A residential replat, though, is a special case because of that public notice, public hearing requirement. So this talks about that. And then there's some odds and ends, like vacating plats. Sometimes people... You know, most times, if somebody wants a different development, they replat the property. There are some times when they just want to get rid of the old plat and go back to raw land, and that's called vacating the plant. And so there's a process of how we would do that.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I've kind of asked this before. I didn't see anything in here about family subdivisions or family plats. And that might not be a thing here at all, but I didn't know if that was anything, that they're just treated like a residential plating process?
Yeah, there's no... There's no distinction between family plats or residential... A plat is a plat.
Okay, great.
So if you want to give or split land between the heirs or kids, you would do that through the plating or replating process. Then it gets into more process-oriented, about what you have to turn in at each stage. So for the sketch plat, you turn in so many copies. Then we actually make the decision about where it is, what kind of plat, what process you use, and that's all done as part of that preliminary meeting. And then, one of the things we do, and it gets kind of this drainage issue. You've probably noticed, as you went through, that there's a whole lot more drainage requirements in here than what is in your current ordinance. One of the things that we're trying to do is to move the drainage design earlier in the process. What a lot of developers do is, they'll go through, and they'll lay out all the lots, and I may have told you before, you know, they'll want to masquerade the site, and then lay out as many lots as they could on there, lay out the streets, and then they decide, well, now how do we handle the drainage? And so they try to put pipes in the ground and stuff like that. What we're trying to do is to get them to consider the drainage early in the process, because it might be that they can avoid a lot of infrastructure if they just set aside the drainage and not encroach onto it. So that's why, as part of the sketch plat, we're requiring what we call a concept drainage plan to be part of that. Also, in drainage, you may have seen mention of what's called ISWIM. It's the Integrated Stormwater Management. It actually comes out of North Central Texas, but Wesley likes it, so we've incorporated a lot of that into your ordinance. And one of the things that does is bring drainage earlier into the process. They did their process because they were under the EPA requirements of water quality protection. Now, you all are not of the size yet where you have to worry about water quality from a state or federal standpoint. On the other hand, it's the right thing to do. But, so we've got provisions for that in this that we will address. Then we get into the... You know, once we decide what kind of plat it is, then we get into the various process. The standard plat I talked about was, well, there's the decision tree about what kinds of plats is. This is the process for the standard process, where they do a preliminary plat, then you'll approve that preliminary plat, then they'll come back with a final plat with all the engineering associated with it. Now, I will tell you, these drawings are not exactly like the ones in your document, because your document actually has newer drawings, but this is the one I have in my current file. And you've actually seen those flow charts before. So it has what's required in the preliminary plat, what the submitted requirements in terms of how big a piece of paper it is. We don't want people coming in with giant pieces of paper that don't fit in standard sizes. So actually, the standard sizes match the sizes that the county will use at the final plat recording stage, with the idea that you'll have the same size all the way through the process. We require a digital copy, so that we can plug it into the GIS system. We can talk about NAD 83 data, if you want to get into that, but North American datum, as opposed to 1927 datum. Copies of drainage plan, copies of a tree inventory. As you all know, we're talking about doing some tree mitigation requirements, so we need to know what's out there before you start clearing things. That way, we can keep track of what gets cleared and what doesn't get cleared. We have a provision in here for street trees. So as you're building streets, we want to have tree-lined streets, and so we're looking for a preliminary plan for that. On residential, the way it works out is basically one tree in the front yard of every house, which is a pretty standard requirement, anyway. A lot of, you know, subdivision deed restrictions require that, anyway, so it shouldn't be too much of a burden on that regard. Now, but in commercial and multifamily, we want to make sure that we've got a good tree-lined street. I got to point out that not everybody likes trees in streets, particularly the public works guys, because tree roots tend to cause havoc with street pavement and utilities, but we've tried to address most of those concerns. We've talked about, when a subdivision is a portion of a larger tract, we want to make sure that they give us a master plan for the entire tract. We want to make sure that all the preliminary plat pieces fit together, and that we have adequate access in different directions. It doesn't have to be very elaborate, just kind of an overall plan of how you plan to totally develop the property, and then we can consider preliminary plats for different sections. We would prefer the preliminary plat cover as much land as possible, and then you come back with final plats that could be smaller pieces. But we want to make sure, again, that everything kind of fits into an overall plan. Then we send notice to everybody within 200 feet, inviting them to come here. One of the changes is that your current ordinance requires the applicant to provide address labels. So we put the burden on them to go to the courthouse and type up labels, and then give them to us that we stick on envelopes. I think that's kind of an onerous burden. And as a matter of fact, we probably have as good or better property records than they do. So we're putting that burden back on us, that we will generate all the labels and just kind of ease that up.
I have a question. It's kind of a silly question, but do we clarify where that 200 feet starts? Whether it's the property line, or if it's like the center of the property?
No, it's the boundary of the development.
Okay. So, because that's a problem in the past, where you have, you know, somebody measured from the middle of their property, and houses only, you know, 50 feet from the property line got notified, and...
No, it's 200 feet from the boundary of the property. And in fact, and I'm not sure if we... Do we go beyond 200 feet? No. My previous city, we just kind of routinely went beyond the 200. It's better to over-notify than to under-notify, so... Processing the plat, we talk about action taken by the commission.
David, I've got a quick question for you. On that 200-foot...
Mm-hmm.
What's the origin of that 200-foot rule?
Okay. Particularly since state law doesn't require you to notice, anyway. That's kind of borrowed from zoning. So in a zoning change, state law says you have to provide notice to everybody within 200 feet, so we just kind of borrowed that and carried it over to the plating.
I have a question. If it's a subdivision of a property already within the subdivision, is it 200 feet from the property line, or 200 feet from the subdivision boundary?
It's 200 feet from the part that's being re-subdivided or replanted. Now, if it's a residential replat, then everybody within the subdivision gets notified.
Are we adding that as a fee, then, to... Because usually, it's on them to spend the time and money to do that and submit it as part of the package, so is there a fee in there that... Are we just absorbing the cost of that?
We're absorbing the costs into the plating fee.
Okay. But we haven't changed those fees at all?
Well, you just adopted a new set of fees last fall, so...
Okay.
But I think the idea is that, on an annual basis, you'll probably review those fees and make sure they're adequate to cover costs. It's not that big a cost.
Right.
Expiration of preliminary plat approvals. And Jennifer has a good catch. State law has changed. There's a section of the state law called Chapter 245 that says that if you're processing permits for a project, when you have a number of approvals, the... Basically, the developer is entitled to use the rules in effect at the time of the initial permit that's granted. And usually, that's the preliminary plat. But we don't want a situation where somebody comes in with a preliminary plat, and then never does anything with it, and they say, oh, I'm vested back to such-and-such date. As an extreme example, there are some folks in San Antonio that say that they're vested back to 1927, because that's when they got their first preliminary plat, even though they never final-platted the property. You had a provision before, where you had a one-year expiration on preliminary plats. We have changed that to two years, because state law requires that any permit has a two-year expiration. You can go longer, but you can't go any shorter than the two-year. And then we also have a provision that they can always come back at that two-year period and ask for a two-year extension. And the reality is, sometimes you need that. Sometimes when the economy tanks, things don't get built as fast as you want them to. But this does give us a time to clear out old preliminary plats, so that they're not governed by rules that were in effect four, eight, 10 years ago. So that's what that is. You also find that in the final plat section, though it's a little bit... Treated a little bit differently in the final plat. And we get into the final plat, talks about submitted requirements. Basic sizes the county takes is 24 by 36, or 18 by 24, so that's what's in there. What the requirements are in terms of number of copies, digital copy, filing fees, tree inventory, and tree mitigation calculations, et cetera. Also, copies of construction plans, because final plat is when we actually get down to, you know, what is it you're exactly going to build, because we're going to make you build that. We're going to have a requirement for a developer's agreement and financial assurance. That will be the contract between the city and the developer that says, developer, you will build everything that's shown in your final plat, and we will approve your plat if you do that. Typically, a lot of developers will want to file the final plat early, so there's a requirement to put up financial assurance, so that the city has the finances to build the infrastructure if the developer walks. They usually do that through a performance bond, or a cash bond, or a letter of credit. We'll talk about letters of credit in a minute. The other way to do it is, we have an approved final plat, but we hold on to it until the developer builds everything. And once he's built everything, then we will file the plat, and that way, he doesn't have to put up financial assurance, because he's accepting all the risk on his own, anyway. So there's no reason for us to be involved in that. We do require that taxes be paid, so we require a certificate showing that. There's requirements for engineering standards, what the drawings need to look like, et cetera, filing fees. The escrow amount there is really the financial assurance, and we'll probably end up rewriting some of that. The short-form plat process is similar, except that we skip the preliminary plat stage, so we go straight to final plat, and so that's why the requirements are slightly different. And there's more flow charts in there. Okay. That's kind of the process. Now we get into form and content, which your current ordinance is a little weak in. Doesn't really require... Things that we want on the plat aren't spelled out in the ordinance, so this... That's why this has a lot more specificity about what's required. Got to have a name of a subdivision. It can't duplicate another name unless it's part or a logical extension of another subdivision. I'm trying to get away from every little two- and three-lot subdivision having their own name, because that gets a little complicated. But to the extent that you could have larger subdivisions, you can have different phases, but you at least have some logic to the naming system. Need to know who owns the property, and we need to know that the owner has given permission for the property to be planted. There've been some cases where developers have walked in wanting a plat, and the owner knew nothing about it. Description of the property by legal lot and block, features like property lines, easements, rights-of-way. We want to make sure that we show all the easements on there. We had a case recently where somebody came in and platted property, and it turned out there was a drainage easement on the property that we didn't know about, and nobody caught it, until they tried to get it... and nobody caught it until they tried to get a building permit. And we said, "Oops, she got a problem," because we have a storm drain there. Uh, so we want to make sure that all the easements are shown, any encumbrances on the land, locations of sewers, water mains, culverts, streets, et cetera. Plenary plat, we want to have the topography. We want to know how the water drains, you know, and, and what direction and, and what the, the hill heights are, so we require two-foot contours. Uh, in most cases, they can get, get that from either our survey data, our, our GIS data, or the county, or in a lot of cases, they'll have their survey or do their own, uh, topography. Um, approximate location and width of proposed streets, uh, plenary concept for connection to water and sewer, all the things that you would think of, conceptual drainage plan, location and dimensions of all parcels, that it might be parks or common use. And we want to make sure that we know who's going to maintain those common areas, that they don't just not stop paying taxes and give it to the city. Um, location of temporary stakes, so that we can find where things are on the ground. Uh, if the plat only covers a part of the property, then we want to have a sketch of the whole thing. Then a vicinity map, you know, something on, somewhere to, so we know where in town we're even talking about. Sometimes that's the hardest thing to get out of developers, because we get some really weird vicinity maps. And then the approximate floodplain limits is shown on the current flood insurance rate map.
So that was, that was all the sketch plat?
Right.
So, question I have is, I mean, for the most part, just overall, having read a lot of this, I, when you come to big developments, I mean, it makes, it makes sense. My mind keeps going back to individual residents that are having to replat, or, you know, say it was, you know, I myself found myself in the situation where the property had been divided after the 81 deadline and had to go ahead and plat the property, um, which wasn't a horrible process, but it was actually harder than when I did it commercially for, but, um, you know, I think about the, I, I read through this list. You're a homeowner reading this list, it scares you to death. You know, having to come before the city with, you know, you know, drainage and easements, and I know you're going to say, "Well, we have, we, we know those situations and, you know," but what can the homeowner guarantee themselves will not be required when they're just going to do something on their own property, whether it's a garage addition to their house, or a shed in the backyard, or something like that, that doesn't scare them to death? And something they can hold on to when they see the city staff potentially being unreasonable in what they're requiring, but saying, "Okay, this is what's been looked at in my situation," because all this, you know, makes sense for developers who have a lawyer and engineer on staff. It's, it's not going to be intimidating for them. But what about the residents? What can they hold on to and hold you to that can't be changed?
And that's not an easy answer, because it's really a case-by-case basis. You know, in some cases, when it's pretty clear that there's not any drainage problems, if it's a simple one-lot plat because they had a, uh, illegal lot of record that they're just trying to plat up, then it's a pretty simple thing to do. And that's why we have the pre-app meeting to come in, meet the staff, and then we can kind of talk through what's required and what's not required.
Is the sketch plat required? The sketch draft required for the, for that meeting?
Doesn't have to be done before that meeting. It could be done prior to them doing the sketch plat. But we do need to have something that we can say, this is what we based our determination of the process on. And it could be just as simple as an 11 by 17 sheet of paper, typically a survey plat, then they're marking out what they're trying to do. Uh, we'll want to know where the easements are, and again, that'll probably come up on a survey plat, uh, your title survey, um, those kinds of things.
Not quite satisfied, but we can continue on?
Okay.
Hey, great question. Um, just because it's the first time it's come up. For, for floodplanes, based on the definition over here, we're using FEMA floodplanes, right?
Correct.
Is there any other source of floodplanes that's updated more often that would be a better, I think, better source to use? Because FEMA, there's, I mean, there's areas here that we know horribly, but when you look on FEMA, it's not part of their, their floodplain, because they haven't updated it in so long.
Yeah. Technically, FEMA is the official. It's kind of like, you know, uh, since this may not be right, but it's official, well, FEMA floodplain boundaries are official. Uh, when we regulate floodplanes, we use the FEMA unless we have better engineering data. So there may be a few cases, for example, we're doing some work on Gills Branch and on Piney Creek, where we're probably going to end up with better engineering data. You know, FEMA doesn't do those maps for development purposes.
Right.
They do those for engineering, insurance purposes.
Insurance, you're right.
And so, but we have to use what we can. But there's nobody else that does regular floodplain maps unless the city decides to do.
So is, is there buried somewhere in here where this, where staff can say, "Hey, look, we know that this isn't a floodplain area for FEMA, but as far as we're concerned, it is." Because my, my fear is that we have an area that, that is not designated floodplain on FEMA maps. We all know it floods, and there's no authority for the city to say, "No," because we know it floods there, and then the developer turn around and go, "Well, it's fine, but your definition of floodplain is whatever the FEMA map says. The FEMA map says, we're good to go."
Well, that, that's usually discussed as part of the plenary conference, and also as they do in the engineering design. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have a lot of regulatory authority to go beyond what the FEMA requirements are unless we do a specific engineering study. Otherwise, we're just, we all know it floods, but I can't go to the courthouse and say, "We didn't let this guy build because we all know it floods."
But is there provision in here for us to do that, or to make them do that in engineering study to determine?
Well, there are cases where they're required to do a flood study if the detailed flooded study has not done, been done by FEMA. Uh, but if FEMA's done a detailed flood study, we, we do require a lot of, and that last part of the ordinance has a lot of information on, on flooding, but ultimately, we go back to FEMA or FEMA-like flood models.
Okay.
I know what you're getting at, but, uh, unless the city spent a lot of money doing a lot of studies, uh, we probably don't have the legal authority.
If it is what it is, then, then it is what it is. I just want to, I just, if, if we were able to finagle some type of, of teeth into the subdivision ordinance where we could do that, I would just ask the question. So, thank you.
Jennifer, you're still taking notes, right? Okay. Okay, we do the same thing on plenary plats, talking about what's required. Gets into a little bit more detailed. Um, gets a little bit more detailed on contours. Again, that's kind of a difference between what we require for contours for the sketch plat and the plenary plat. If you're going to a plenary plat, you have a fairly complicated plat, and so that would justify getting the more detailed information. If you're an individual with one or two lots that you're doing, probably the USGS or the existing city contours are going to be adequate for your purposes. And all you have to do is just kind of photocopy those onto your, your drawing. Plenary drainage studies, water and sewer layout, et cetera. Then we get into the final plat, and the final plat is that legal document that gets filed at the courthouse. Plenary plats don't get filed at the courthouse, they stay here at City Hall. Final plats are what gets filed, and that's the legal document which tells what your piece of property is. So instead of your property being described by meets and bounds, it's now Lot 1, Block 1 of, you know, Glen Avon Edition of whatever, uh, it is. Requirements, again, a little bit more detailed on the requirements. Have to be drawn in ink on Mylar, and all that kind of good stuff. Your current ordinance requires that you put lots setbacks on all four sides on the plat. Actually, I think that's a little bit overkill, so what we're requiring is only the front yard setback gets put on there. And part of the reason is, one, it kind of clears up the drawing, but two, setbacks get changed over time. And so, if you have a zoning that requires one-lot setback, and you've got a plat that has a different setback, then you've got to resolve the difference. Um, so what we're requiring is the front yard setback, and that's probably what you're seeing at the street. You want to make sure that, that buildings are in a logical order, uh, setback from the street.
Really quickly, just on that subject, why, I mean, I understand the logic that setbacks change, so why even require the front setback?
Because when you move in, you want to have some assurance that we're not going to go to a zero setback and somebody's going to build our house 20 feet out in front of yours.
But couldn't it change to zero setback by the same logic before?
It could.
Okay.
You know, in the Form Based Code, there are some, what are essentially zero setbacks. And then we have a provision of having, and they have to go to variance on the average setback with the adjacent houses.
So when your plat and the current zoning conflict, which one overrules the other?
Uh, it's usually the more stringent. But the plat carries some weight, because it's officially filed at the courthouse. And if you want to get that changed, then you've got to go through a residential replat process, which requires everybody to agree. Curve data. Current ordinance isn't real good on what kind of signature blocks need to be on the ordinance and what kinds of notes need to be on the ordinance. So we're kind of strengthening that up. So the first thing is to talk about what the surveyor's, um, statement will be. And that's a little bit different that, you know, the current, we don't really have specific language that's required, and the surveyors end up putting in such language that they're not responsible for it anymore. And what we're trying to get them is to at least take the responsibility that they're required under state law. Dedication instrument, that's where the city actually gets rights-of-ways and easements and streets and stuff, so, uh, it spells out what's required on the dedication statement. And the most important part down here is that says, uh, "I do hereby dedicate to the public in fee simple all streets, alleys, rights-of-way, parks and stuff." There's a certificate of approval to be signed by the Planning and Zoning Commission Chair and the City Secretary. Uh, you haven't been signing things before, but now, the mayor's been doing that, but since you all are the approval body, it now falls on you. Uh, you're obvious, we're obviously going to help you through that process, so that we're not making you sign something that's going to cause you problems. Uh, have a place in there to show, uh, one thing that it's requiring is that the title block be at the lower right-hand corner of the plat. Uh, now we have title blocks kind of all over the place, and if they're at the top of the sheet, and you've got sheets in a bunch, in a drawer, you can't see the top of the sheet. So we want to have the title block at the, you know, it's pretty mundane stuff, but it helps to, uh, manage things. Um, and then also, it tells where it's recorded at the county courthouse. There's a note on the plat that says any franchise utility, including the city, has the right to move and keep moved, anything that encroaches on their rights-of-way and easements. So you can't build your shed on one of our water easements, uh, or even worse, in our drainage easement, uh, that we have the right to go in and move it if we have to. Uh, we'll usually try to get you to do it. Definitely try to get you to not build it in the first place there, but, you know, sometimes those things kind of magically appear. Public open space easements, uh, you may know those as visibility triangles. Uh, and we get back into the design, we're doing visibility triangles a little bit differently, but the idea is when you get to a street intersection, you want to have an area on the corner clear so that you can see down the street. Uh, you know, we've all probably been in situations, um, in fact, I, almost every day, situation where I'll come to the end of Pine Street, Main Street, and I can't see around the parked cars. Uh, and the idea is that we would try to keep areas clear for traffic safety purposes. And then that will be actually a note on the face of the plat. We'll have a note on the face of the plat talking about floodplain restrictions. Um, we will require that the 100-year floodplain uh, usually be platted as an easement on the plat, and then restrictions on what you can and can't do within that easement. So when you buy a piece of property and it has that floodplain easement, you know that that's floodplain and don't build your house there. Notation on tree preservation mitigation plan, uh, doesn't have to be on the face of the plat, the actual plan, but to note that there are requirements. So, you know, it'd be a shame that we went to a lot of effort to preserve trees, and then they sell the lots, and then the homeowners go down, cut everything down. So we're trying to provide some protection there. So, uh, the next is a list of restrictive covenants, conditions, or limitations, basically deed restrictions. Because you all have zoning, you don't really have the authority to enforce deed restrictions. But we want to have the deed restrictions filed at about approximately the same time as the plat, so that when you do a title search, that'll come up together. Uh, it's, it's more complicated when the deed restrictions are filed at a later date, and sometimes title companies miss that. So, talks about the processing of the final plat, uh, requires that it follow the comprehensive plan, uh, won't be, um, there's a semi-restriction, so therefore, in the process of changing the comprehensive plan, people don't rush out and try to subdivide property that's in conflict with that. Um, has to be complete. In fact, it won't get as far as you until it is complete. Talks about final plat approval. Um, you have the authority to approve or disapprove a plat, or you have the authority to, you don't have the authority to conditionally approve a plat. I know that sounds backwards, but y'all remember the 30-day rule? You either approve a plat, or if you don't, it, it, it's automatically approved. So what you can do is you can conditionally disapprove the plat. Seems kind of backwards, but that turns off that 30-day clock until they get what they need to do back, uh, to meet your requirements. Uh, this is the appeal process, that the applicant can appeal administrative decisions uh, to the city council. Um, city council may not approve or disapprove the plat, but can remand it back to the P and Z for reconsideration.
So, what would the purpose of the appeal be then? They just, if the city council can't take action on it, would it help?
Well, you know, if we decide... You know, if the staff decides that we're going to turn something down, and the applicant says, "Well, that's just wrong. You ought to approve it," uh, they can ask the city council to consider it. Council can approve or disapprove the plat, but they can send it back to you to approve or disapprove.
So they can just say, "We're going to leave it as is," or they can just?
Right. We would hope that they would say, "Leave it as is," because we hope that we made the right decision. But we need to give that option. Recording the plat, uh, the staff files the plat, the staff files the plats now, but, uh, you know, in the old days, we used to let developers file plats, and sometimes things would mysteriously change between the time it got signed here and it ended up at the courthouse. Erasers came out and pens came in, so, uh, that kind of protects that. Okay, final plats. In most cases, final plats don't expire, but there are two situations in which they do. One is, they do a final plat, and then they just don't do anything. Uh, and if we don't file it at the courthouse, then we give them that two-year window, and when they're, if they don't, uh, take any action to move forward, then it expires, and they've got to start over again. Now, there also is a situation where they post financial assurance, and we file the plat, and then they don't build it. Uh, in most cases, the city will take the financial assurance and, uh, basically make the bonding company build the project. But we do have the option there, that if that doesn't happen, we can also, uh, uh, the final plat be expired, then you would vacate that plat. But you don't want a situation where you have a plat in the files, and there's no infrastructure there to serve any lots, uh, because legally, they could sell lots in that subdivision. Then we get into engineering standards and plans. Uh, we have adopted the Austin, uh, standard specifications, uh, since you all don't have your own standard specifications, uh, so that, you'll see that through there. Uh, I'll tell you, Wesley's not really excited about the Austin specifications, but those were the best ones he could find, and most people around here are familiar with those, so. so.
David, that, you kind of almost answered the question I had. Why did we go pick Austin versus some other city in Texas?
Well, I mean, one of the options it could be to adopt the Fort Worth standards, but most of the builders down, down here are not familiar with the Fort Worth standards. So we're looking for something in the general area. I know he looked at some places like Round Rock and Georgetown and some places like that, but we ended up with, you know, staying with the Austin.
Okay.
That may change. And then getting back into details about what's required to be on the engineering plans, water, drainage. And I know it looks daunting, but in most cases, developer has an engineer and it'll make sense to them. And most of this wouldn't apply to a little, small development. I know I'm going through this fairly quick, but I think it's all fairly self-explanatory.
I have a question on, kind of go back to the flooding issue and the conceptual site layout. So it says here that they have to provide conceptual estimates of three storm design approaches, a one-year, 25-year, and 100-year.
Yeah, that actually should be two years, so I'll go back and catch that, but.
Okay. I'm wondering if it actually makes sense to try to implement something like a 500-year storm, since we're hitting those thresholds such more, more frequently now?
Well...
Just in concept, so you know where that would be?
You know, when they do a, if somebody goes in and remaps the floodplain, they do that as a FEMA requirement anyway. As far as us designing structures for the 500-year flood, that would end up being a channel or a system that is just so big that it doesn't make a lot of economic sense. And that's why most people have kind of adopted the 100-year. Now, well, a lot of the problem here in town is a lot of the stuff you have designed was designed for the 25-year and not the 100-year. So by requiring everybody to do the 100-year, I think we're going to have a lot more protection than you do now. But just five, I mean, why stop at 500? You could design for the 1,000-year flood and, you've got to pick a point. It's a level of risk that you're willing to accept and most people have accepted the 100-year.
I mean, I think, because on the conceptual site layout, aren't you really just showing where that would be?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I feel like it would be not that challenging to just put an extra line on there to say, "Okay, a 500-year flood hits here," just as an extra bit of information.
It's just a little bit more computation engineer has to do, so.
Right, but I think, you know, what if we had three 500-year storm in the last four years?
Yeah.
Seems to make sense.
Yeah, I understand. Did you get that? Monuments, you know, one of the part of the subdivision is putting on the ground exactly where things are. So we require that there be corners set at this, corners in the subdivision, at each lock corner, we put in an iron pen so that surveyor or builder can go out, usually with a metal detector, and find out where those corners are. This has in it that requires three benchmarks. I don't know that we need three benchmarks, but we may talk about that a little bit more. We need at least one benchmark so that we know, you know, we can figure out where things are two-dimensionally, but we also want to know three-dimensionally where things fit above sea level and be able to fit that into our GIS system and so we'll, we'll work on that. Erosion and sediment control, even though the city is not required to comply with the stormwater permits, builders are required to, particularly the big builders, so the Walmarts and the Home Depots are required. So we just went ahead and put that in there. Discussion about development agreements and financial assurance. Okay, so we talk about performance bonds, payment bonds, maintenance bonds. This allows irrevocable letters of credit. In fact, you currently allow letters of credit. City attorney is raising a red flag because letters of credit are sometimes hard to collect on. You know, they may hand you a piece of paper and then you go back to the bank to try to get it and for whatever reason, they were not going to give you the money. So he has a concern about that. I can tell you from personal experience that a letter of credit is only as good as the bank that it's drawn on. So back in the 80s, we had a letter of credit drawn on a savings and loan by, owned by Mr. Keating, if y'all remember Mr. Keating. And so when that went under, the letter of credit was worthless. So he, so one of the questions I want to ask you is, do we want to allow letters of credit or not? The pros are, if you allow the letter of credit, it's a relatively inexpensive way for a developer to put up financial assurance. What he has to do is he has to show the bank that he has adequate assets to cover that. So that kind of locks up his assets, but then it really doesn't cost him much beyond that. Whereas bonds are usually based on 1% to 2% of the total value of the bond, they have to pay to the bonding company. And so that's actually money out of the developer's pocket, but I'm open to suggestions.
How are the assets, so, so they have to prove, they have the assets to cover to the bank, how are the assets at risk? Is that through an agreement between them and the bank?
Right.
The bank would go after the assets?
Right.
Could you require multiple letters of credit? Or like, like if somebody wanted to use a letter of credit, could we require two from two different institutions?
I've never heard of that being done, but I guess that's something we could look at. But keep in mind, from the developer's standpoint, he's tying up assets. So he's going to be a little reluctant tying up twice the amount of assets that he could be using on other projects.
I feel like a percentage is not that big of a deal for a developer. I think a bond is a favorable way to go on that one.
It depends, it depends on how big is the project. It must be 10, 15, 10, 20, $50 million bond for a project, you know, 1% or 2% upfront could be a, I'm looking at, I'm looking at balancing the, you know, continuing to bring development, you know, and growth to the city while at the same time, you know, protecting our interests and a letter of credit is something that's common, but we're still kind of easy about it, you know, if more than one, they can bring more than one, promise the same assets to two different banks, you're twice the people you go after and the chances of both, you know, going belly up would be lessened.
Got a question on letter of credits. Can we be specific about the type of financial institution that gives that letter of credit?
There's already some stuff in state law that addresses that and I'm not sure how much further beyond state law we can do on that.
Okay.
Putting in a huge multimillion dollar subdivision, a percentage is not that big of a deal for them to put up.
It's not uncommon, most cities require something like this. And keep in mind, the folks that build the infrastructure before they file the plat don't have to do this anyway, so. They're going to build all the infrastructure before we file the final plat. Our hammer is whether we file the final plat or not. If they don't build the infrastructure, we're not going to file the final plat. So they're basically building at their risk and it doesn't cost them anything extra in terms of bonds. And actually here in town, most of the developers do it that way. So it may be sort of a moot point. I've got mixed emotions about the letter of credit. I know they work and sometimes they don't. And then let me reassure you that a really small project, it's not uncommon that someone just writes a check and then we just hold it here at City Hall and give it back to them when the project's over, so.
Yeah. Well, I guess my question, so you're saying that A, the bond isn't, a percentage on the bond isn't that uncommon?
Right.
And B, most developers just pre-build the infrastructure anyway?
Correct.
Sounds like that's the kind of developer we want to encourage anyway, and so.
So I'm hearing everybody likes bonds and pre-build. I hadn't heard a clear consensus on letters of credit.
I, I think we all kind of agree, at least that, with the city attorney, that we could just pull it, so.
Okay. Inspections and what kind of notice they need to give us, that they don't just call us and say, "Hey, I'm going to pour concrete in 15 minutes, be here." We say, "No, you've got to give us at least a day's notice." We have a sit, a, a situation in here that allows you to defer improvements. In most cases, we want the improvements built before we file the plat. But there may be a situation where it doesn't make sense to build it then, that you wait until something else happens. So an example might be a property where they have half of the street, it may not make sense for them to build that half a street. We'll defer that till the other half gets built. But we'll require that they put up financial assurance for their share of that half-street and they will build the whole street at one time. And then that would come to you for approval. Contracts, private development contracts, that's the contract between the developer and his contractor that we're usually not a party to. Requirement for maintenance bond, and this is another question. My experience, and remember I come from North Texas, it's pretty common to require that a developer put up a maintenance bond for 100% of the cost of the infrastructure for two years. In the old days, it used to be one year, but we've learned that it really takes about two winters to get all the cracks and stuff to, to show up. Wesley's suggesting maybe 100% is too much. And in fact, he suggested only 20%. Again, that saves money for the developer because he pays a percentage of what that 20% would be. The risk is that if there is a big infrastructure piece, say a bridge or a culvert that failed, city may be on the hook to help rebuild it. So we'd want to make sure that we at least cover, you know, the reality, it's not likely that everything's going to fail completely in that two-year period, but it's nice to be able to have that. The reason for the maintenance bond is that we accepting those improvements, but we want to make sure that they maintain it and replace anything that fails in that two-year period before we start picking up the dime on doing that. Why? I think that's probably what they're doing now and that's what he thinks builders are used to. Unfortunately, Wesley has family in town, so he couldn't make the meeting tonight, so.
What, so?
I gave him a personal invitation, but he...
My, my difficulty here is, is trying to figure out, how much is a maintenance, what would a typical maintenance bond look like? Like a whole 100% maintenance bond, what would that value look like?
Well, if you have...
I know they vary, but...
If you had a million dollars worth of streets put in, the maintenance bond would be for a million dollars. So if there was a major street failure, there'd be sufficient funds to be able to repair it.
So my thought would be that, that at this point, there's, we don't, we as a city don't, want to have the money to, to do something like that, so I don't see why requiring 100% is not an issue, especially if we're going to, you know, if we're doing away with letters of credit and pushing for bonds on the other side, I don't see why 100% of this wouldn't be, wouldn't be reasonable.
I was curious kind of what surrounding jurisdictions do.
I don't know specifically. I would bet that most of the cities along I-35 probably require the 100%.
Okay, so developers, that would be a fairly standard?
I, I guess my question is, why would the city want to be responsible for 80% of their failure?
Well, that's a policy question. I think Wesley's thinking is, it's not likely that 100% is going to fail and that maybe only 20% is going to fail and he wants to make sure that we cover the 20%. But that's an assumption that only 20% is going to fail.
And I think we all have to balance the idea between not making it financially, you know, a financial disincentive to, to come and develop here, so it's, it's a balancing act for all that stuff, too, so.
I was going to say, I kind of, you know, bonds don't seem to be a big issue, but there's a big difference between 100% and 20%. I mean, why, I mean, 50% is bound in between there somewhere, so it's 70%, you know? So, I mean, I, I think it feels like we'd definitely be on the safer side of things, but like you said, what are the odds? We want to encourage people to come in and work, we don't want to make it, or to build, we don't want to make it too difficult, but, you know, whereas 100% may seem a bit high, 20% seems equally low, you know, and so...
If 100% is what they're more accustomed to now, I'd like to hear some more discussion, I'd like to hear some more discussion, but I think 20% is quite low.
Okay. And maybe what we can do between now and the next meeting is do a survey of surrounding communities and find out specifically what they're requiring.
Think that would be valuable.
Sales tax, you may or may not be aware that materials put into a public street are actually exempt from sales tax because it's a public infrastructure, so there's a provision in there where the contractor could save paying sales tax on that. We require insurance, we require indemnification. And it gets into notice to proceed, what's required before we will let them start work in terms of insurance, security, i.e. the financial assurance, inspection fees, et cetera. And there's a glitch, I shouldn't say it, well... Need to clarify, you will have the authority to approve the plat. Council still has the obligation to approve construction plans. You don't have the authority to enter into contracts with people, so that's why it says council in some places and you guys in others. But we'll, we'll clarify so it'll make sure why it shows one place and not others. And we just have a general order of construction and then how the improvements are improved. And then a requirement for as-built drawings. They draw up a set of plans and almost invariably, things don't get built exactly like what was on the plans, so we want them to go back in and note what changes were made, you know, location might be changed or slope might change and we want to get all that documented so that when we come back 20 years later and want to find out where things are, we have a good drawing of where that is. Discussion of ownership, maintenance of completed public facilities and private facilities. So we're plugging it away, probably it's been an hour and a half. You want to take a break? You want to keep plowing on? Do you want to, how do you want to proceed?
What's the pleasure of the commission? You need a break? Let's take a five-minute break.
Is our, is our intention to try and get through this whole thing tonight? Is that, is that the goal?
Oh, I'd like to, but I've already said it's really up to you guys. If you guys start nodding off, there's no reason to keep going on, so.
No, I, I get that, I'm just wondering if we, if it's worth plowing through for another 15, 20 minutes and then calling it a night or take a bathroom break?
We're going to take a bathroom break.
Okay.
All right, Viviana. Does that, that help? Okay, does the commission want to set a time to, that we want to go toward? Or do we want to try to get through the whole thing tonight?
We're, we're like halfway through and we've been here for an hour and a half, so it's either nine o'clock or-ish, or always put a limit at eight and finish.
Well, take a, take a look at it at eight and see where we are.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I assume you're back from your break officially, okay. So now we're getting into design and planning and engineering factors, so it's probably the more important part of all of this is how the new developments are going to look like and how we're going to protect health, safety and welfare of the community. So I think, as I mentioned at one of the previous workshops, we're basically setting two different design approaches. One is going to be the city design approach, things that we expect to be done inside the city limits, and one's going to be the rural design approach, which is mainly going to be used in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. And there's reasons why you'd want to treat different. We don't have any land use controls out in the ETJ in terms of zoning and stuff like that, so we'll treat those slightly different. But I think we're trying to develop a design that's not traditional old suburbia. We're trying to get something that's more walkable and hopefully have more sustainability over the long term. And as the city manager likes to point, you know, downtown... And as the city manager likes to point, you know, downtown is doing great, and it was built, you know, over 100 years ago, so we need to go start looking about what about that is what's good, and try to get away from just a sea of tract housing that we could get under your current ordinance. So in the city design approach, it really starts at the street, and we're trying to address each street based on how cars are moving. Different streets have different requirements depending on how much we want cars to move versus how much we want people to move. And unfortunately, in the current ordinance, people don't fit into the equation. It's the cars that fit into the equation, so we're trying to put people back into that equation. So speeds, you'll see later that most of the design speeds that we're looking at are actually slower than what most...what the current requirements are. We're trying to slow cars down by allowing designs that would allow narrower lanes and a little bit more restriction. Talking about different kinds of...the way this is broken out is they've got speed, which is basically arterial streets, they've got free streets, which are basically thoroughfares and collectors, they've got slow streets, which are basically minor collectors, and then there's local residential streets. And design speeds, rather than most residential streets being 30 miles an hour, but in reality, the engineering design would be for like 40 miles an hour, we're making the design speed be more like 20 miles an hour, is what we want people to have.
I have a question, please.
Sure.
When you talk about the narrower lanes to slow traffic down, are we talking about lanes so narrow that when people park on the street, you're now having, just like in the city of Bastrop, having to drive into the other lane to get around all those parked cars?
We want to incorporate the width of the parked cars, but we don't want to make it so wide that people speed by the parked cars. We want people to feel the parked cars and want to slow down, but we want to make sure that, you know, they can still get back and forth. Though surprisingly, on streets like this, there's not a lot of head-on collisions. People are usually pretty smart about stopping and letting somebody get through, but we want to make sure that we don't have...you know, for example, on Pine Street, between the courthouse and the Catholic Church, there's parking on both sides, and it can feel a little narrow through there, but you also tend to drive a little slower through there as well.
Yeah, I know on pecan sometimes when somebody's parked directly across from each other and you have oncoming traffic, obviously somebody can't go, but I guess I feel that it's unsafe to force a car to have to drive out of its lane and into the middle of the street. That's illegal, I would think, but...
Well, the other option, and something that we talked about, is you can solve that by prohibiting parking on one side of the street.
Right.
But then somebody's house, you can't have cars.
Right, and then somebody doesn't have a place to park. So that's my concern about...I get narrowing lanes, but if you don't do that, then you put, like they have in Austin, speed bumps through the...I know they're annoying, but they work, so...
Yep. I'm not a...and there's really a distinction between speed bumps and road humps. Road humps are a little longer and not as high. You can often accomplish the same purpose by just having different texture, stamped concrete, or cobblestones, that kind of thing. You know, people slow down if they sense something different. So if the pavement changes, or there's a construction of trees on either side will slow people down, and it doesn't have to be parked cars.
Originally, when you presented that, I can't remember the numbers, about every five or 10 miles an hour?
The lethality of a...
Yes. Can you refresh my memory on that?
Not the specific numbers, but it jumps pretty quickly from 20 miles per hour, like 80% pedestrians survive, 40 miles per hour, only 20% of the pedestrians survive. So that's the general breakpoint. Street cross-sections, I kind of like the idea of actually having some graphic street sections in there so people can visualize what it looks like to have cars on either side. We haven't put those together yet, and we've been wrestling with how to put those together. We'll see how that all kind of falls out. I mean, the information's in there on the tables, but there's not a good graphic in Want to have internet-connected network of streets. We want to make sure that streets connect with adjacent property, that we don't end up with little enclaves with only one way in and out. Say, Pecan Park and Childers, and then everybody wonders why traffic is maybe so bad on Childers because there's only one way in and out. We want to make sure that we got multiple ways in and out. We're not requiring a rectangular grid. There are a lot of advantages to having a rectangular grid, but we do want to make sure that there are regular intersections and that we don't have street offsets in there. And the way...the big issue is connectivity, and there's lots of ways to promote connectivity. You know, not having a lot of long cul-de-sacs is one. A lot of cities have gone to what's called a connectivity index, and it's really...it's sort of an elaborate mathematical expression of the number of lengths and nodes, et cetera. I've approached it here of just simply having a maximum block perimeter, which is a little bit different measure than most people use, but if we have...the blocks cannot exceed 1,600 feet perimeter, that automatically creates enough of a grid system that you get the connectivity we want. And actually, most of the blocks in downtown more than meet that, so that's kind of the approach there. Sidewalks have to be provided on both sides?
Really quickly on that point, so in that same section, you talk about the civic space?
Yeah.
That can be the breakup for another 1,600 square foot section?
Right.
And they have to be at least 50 feet width. I guess my question is with your previous comment about this is land the city has to take care of, so it's kind of like a small park?
Right.
Does that count towards their dedicated space?
Probably not for their...well, I guess that's something we could consider, usually not.
And you also mentioned the city doesn't really want small chunks of land either.
Well, they're difficult to maintain, but that is one option if somebody just has to have a big block of breaking up the block for pedestrian purposes. I think I may have shown you in one of my slides of a cross pedestrian way between a couple of houses, which is what this would essentially accomplish. Dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs are not permitted except for certain situations, and we'll talk about cul-de-sacs a little bit later. I think I probably told you that one of the Gattis laws of planning is that Americans find a good idea and then exaggerate it to the point where it's no longer a good idea. You know, cul-de-sacs started out as a relatively short 150-foot length roadway that dead-ended onto a public park, so people could walk through the street into a linear park system behind it. We've taken that cul-de-sac, and I've seen cul-de-sacs as much as two miles long, and you get all the way to the end and realize you can't go anywhere, so...and we don't want to have that, so what we're trying to...but people like to live on cul-de-sacs, and so people will pay a little bit extra to live on a cul-de-sac because they see traffic being lower. So we want to allow cul-de-sacs, but we want to kind of minimize and shorten the length up. Alley's.
Before you jump...
David, before you leave that section quickly, there, I think it's I, nope, all streets are publicly held. Is that new for this ordinance?
I think your current ordinance is silent on private streets.
Okay.
But we're trying to be fairly specific to say private streets are not permitted.
Okay, yeah, I caught that one still. Thanks.
I have a question as well. You know, initially talking about making things more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, is there any...I didn't see anything in here about trying to actually provide dedicated bike lanes in certain...
No, other than there is a mention that we are adopting basically complete streets. Yeah, let's see where it was. Yeah, to the extent feasible, all streets should be designed to safely accommodate all transportation modes, including pedestrians, bicycles, automobiles, and small bus transit.
So if there's not dedicated, which I agree, like slowing down the cars makes it much safer for bicyclists, but is there any provision which we could provide to do like sharrows or something like that, so that at least there's more...
We could, and that's one of the things that we could also address in those street cross-sections, to show how a bike lane or a shared lane could work.
I'd like to see something like that.
I think since the fire in Grass Egress has taken on a totally different meaning to all of us, and every time we talk about cul-de-sacs, I just cringe. So...but it's somewhat...it becomes an issue depending on what part of this area you live in. I mean, if you're in the pines, it's one situation, and if you're living in flatlands, it's another. So are we addressing that at all?
What we're requiring is that any street that has more than 20 lots on it has to have a second point of access, so...
Is that public access, or could that be like a cul-de-sac with a...like a fire gate, you know, that's locked, but they could...
I think it says it's public, but we'll get to that in a few minutes. Okay, street cross-sections, network, okay, we're down to alleys.
Can I go back one second and just ask a quick question? On when he addressed section I, all streets must be publicly dedicated, private streets and closed or gated streets are prohibited, as in a gated, community gated streets?
Correct.
So like out in the colony, there's...I guess it's one of the newer sections of the subdivision where there's a gate that...
Yeah, the colony by definition are all private streets. And previously approved subdivisions are...
Their grandfathered.
Their kind of grandfathered. But we don't want us...and, you know, part of the problem is just, one, keeping track of who owns what street. A lot of people do private streets because they don't want to build up to standards. They want to kind of do something less, and then it's not that unusual that they come back and say, "Oh, we can't afford to take care of the street. City, come take it over, maintain it for us." So we want to try to prevent that. And then there's a little bit of a social equity of, you know, why the public not use some streets and can use others.
And is it a matter of whether there's ever any issue with emergency vehicles having to get into gated communities and not able to get in, or is it...I don't know how that works.
We can do some design to provide for that, but there's always some...
Generally, they can use either a knock box, or you can just pull the pin on those gates and swing them open.
Yeah, I didn't know how that worked.
But that does involve the fire truck to stop and open the knocks box to be able to open the gate, or...
So if there's a fire or something, that could be an issue. But the idea is that from this point forward, we're not going to cultivate gated communities.
Are there other communities around us that have similar parts or ordinances where they prohibit gated communities?
I don't know specifically around here. I know that there are others, and for example...
And I get the idea behind it. I'm just, from a development standpoint, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if somebody at some point came in, you know, like on the outskirts, who wanted to do a small 20 lot, you know, private community, if that was something that we should restrict. Just a thought.
Well, actually, we had a proposal to have one in Pecan Park, and we said no, so...maybe when we do our survey of maintenance bond requirements, we can also check on private streets. It's more of a philosophical...don't have a lot of alleys in town, but you're getting more and more movement by house builders who want to build narrow lots, and the way you handle narrow lots and not have a sea of garage doors, and I know that's kind of an issue with you all, is to have them backloaded off an alley. So we're requiring that if you have narrower than, I believe, 60-foot lots, that you have to provide alleys off the back to provide rear entry for a garage. So we're not saying, "No, you can't have narrow lots." We just want to make sure that all you see is the garage, so...
Would the alley count as a public road?
Yes.
Okay.
Really, really quickly, so I know it's happened several times in the downtown where existing lots have been subdivided to smaller than, I think it was 50-foot, because they can have smaller setbacks on the side yards and stuff. So in that situation, they would now be required to provide rear access to those lots?
Right. In the future, I mean, yeah. And actually, we had a proposal for development on Emil Street, and the problem is, in that particular part of the Form-based Code, it requires the garage to be set back from the front of the house or in the rear, and the builder wasn't planning on that, so if there had been a rear entry alley, it would have been no brain, but...
So is this document still secondary to Form-Based Code in the downtown area? The Form-Based Code still...would it supersede?
This supplements the Form-Based Code.
Okay.
Just like this supplements the zoning. In fact, I want to get to a section further down that in your current ordinance, really it belongs in the zoning ordinance, and so we'll move it back over to zoning. Here's where we talk about blocks.
I have one more observation to make.
Sure.
Excuse me. On the alley and garages in the back, I didn't realize until I'd been in two of those very large developments in Austin, what actually happens, which is people don't want to drive all the way around if they're just running in to their house to pick up stuff. The streets were bumper to bumper cars parked, which sort of defeats what we're trying to achieve, doesn't it?
It does. I mean, there's often some off-street parking that they could do. Other problem is, you know, we used to plan on people having two cars. Now, I don't know about you, but my neighbor has five cars at his house, but that's...and that's one of the drawbacks.
So could there be restrictions? Because I get what she's saying. If somebody decides to have a Super Bowl party and they all line up along that little alleyway and block it, could there be restrictions?
Well, there wouldn't be on the alleyway. Usually what's happening is only the owners use the alley if they use it at all, and what's...
They're parking on the street.
But they don't want to drive around back to put a car in the garage. They just park in front of their house, and if everybody does that, then...
But if the alleyway is considered public, a public street, somebody could...what would be there to prevent anybody from just parking?
Well, alleys are typically not wide enough to park on, and they're usually striped as fire lanes.
You could still restrict parking on a street like that, so it would fall to the police department to, you know, go in there and tow cars if somebody called to complain.
That's what I...yeah.
Yeah, the city at any time could pass a no parking ordinance on any street. You just have to face the equity problem of somebody can't park in front of their house now, and they're not happy about it.
Yeah. Please throw a quick...I lived in Plano for a few years. Plano loves alleys. In fact, they're all over there, everything there. What's interesting is you don't know your neighbors because you drive down the alley, you pull in your garage, you get your car, and go, "What?" You don't have no reason to go out and walk up and down and see your neighbors in the streets. Nine times out of 10, you might find one or two cars in the street you never saw your neighbors. So it kind of had that reverse effect. But as you said, if somebody has a party, there's only one parking, and it lines up the streets. But, I mean, it's got pros and cons on both sides of it. Personally, I like alleys because it puts everything behind the house, mostly the garage door.
Well, right now, when people have parties in town, it lines up on both sides of the street now, so, I mean, what's the difference?
And I think you too, just playing on that. So I lived on an alley in grad school in an accessory dwelling unit behind a house, and I absolutely loved it. I mean, it was the service way for everything, and it was the walking path to campus and everything. But, I mean, with the whole complete street design and having more walkable communities, hopefully you're getting away from not knowing your neighbors because everybody is actually out about in front, you know, and you park in the back, and then it's not just like a sea of cars or sea of garages. I'm thinking of one development in particular, but, you know...
Next section is on blocks, and that's where the 1,600-foot perimeter is at, and then it talks about breaking up the civic space lots. There are some allowances to have little bigger lots if there's certain situations that are met, but the idea is that we'll promote connectivity by having smaller blocks. I do have some provisions of commercial lots. You know, a shopping center wouldn't fit with a 1,600-foot block, but if you count the private lanes, private drives in the shopping center, you can easily meet the 1,600-foot. You just have to kind of lay out the shopping center to address that. And actually, the way retail is going this way, retail is moving away from big box... And actually, the way retail is going this way, retail is moving away from big box, big power centers to have more of these walkable areas. So, it's, it's not going to be that hard to accomplish, I don't think. And then obviously, industrial areas have a slightly different use, and so there's a, a different requirement on that. Okay, so that's kind of the city design approach. Then we have the rural design approach. So, this would be the area out in the country. And what we're proposing to do is try to preserve some of that rural country feel as opposed to having a, a sea of development. So, it requires, one, it makes a determination that for water quality reasons, we want to have the maximum impervious cover at no more, no more than 30%. It's not quite as onerous as, say, Austin's impervious cover, but that gives us a trigger. Remember in the ETJ, we don't have a lot of regulatory authority, but we do have the authority to regulate impervious cover under the water code of all things. And so, that's what we're using to help regulate lot size. And what we end up with is a one-acre basically lot density. Now, your current ordinance actually calls for one-acre minimums and two and three-acre lots. I'm not really sure if you have enough ground to support that, but this kind of takes a little bit different approach on how you look at that. And so, it sets up the five-step process that we talked about last time. One is you do a pre-development condition and a yield plan. You determine if you laid out just straight lots, how many lots would you have? Then you take that number and then kind of protect the, you know, if you've got trees on the property, if you've got a meadow or something, something that kind of preserves the rural character, let's go ahead and preserve that and then take the houses. You can tuck them into the trees or tuck them over into a cluster area and you preserve the rest of that as a conservation easement.
So, out, just out of curiosity, as far as regulating what's out there, does the city, like you, like you mentioned the, the water, we can regulate that, but what about road quality? Is that county standards or is that city standards as far as the, the construction of the roads?
We, in the statutory ETJ, and to some extent in the area that we regulate subdivisions, they're to our standards. And we're trying to get away from having city streets and rural streets. Now, there are some differences and you'll see that a little later on, but the rural road standards are not that much. And we're trying to kind of beef those up a little because eventually we hope the city gets out there.
Because I, and I completely agree. I'm just thinking that, you know, developers develop based on what they can make, not where they're going to live. And, you know, a big one-acre lot requires a lot of road to be put in front of it and that road gets pretty expensive to put in. So, I feel like we're just prohibiting construction in rural areas.
Well, under the current county subdivision standards, there's a one-acre minimum lot size.
But they have, but they have a lesser standard for road quality.
Right.
Which is less expensive to create.
But I think what I'm arguing is by allowing them to cluster the lots, so you're not really having a one-acre minimum lot, you're having a one-acre density.
Okay, I got you.
That you're kind of moving over. You build less road to serve the same number of houses.
But the overall development's one acre average.
One acre average, right. But you're saving on all the infrastructure for the area that you're not developing. And then we also have the provision that if they don't like that standard, they can always petition to come into the city and they can develop under the city standards. General design requirements in terms of physical conditions, conformity with the comprehensive plan, provision for future subdivision, reserve strips prohibited. Reserve strips are when a subdivision rider put, let's say, one-foot strip of land all the way around his subdivision to prevent anybody else from connecting to his subdivision because you'd have to cross private property to get there, that's prohibited. You'd have to have straight stubs all the way to the property line. Access to lots, every lot has to access a public street or a, an approved public access easement. We do have some lots in town that don't have access to public streets and we kind of struggle with how to make those legal buildable lots. Public improvements have to be built to standards, logical extension of streets and utilities. Here's where it says no more than, if you have more than 20 lots, you have to have at least two points of access. And that's really based on fire safety. And that any land in the 100-year floodplain shall not be developed.
I'm curious with the two points of access for 20 lots, should there also be like a secondary threshold? So, I'm thinking just like mega subdivisions that have 150 lots. Would they still only be required to have two or should they say like four?
Well, in generally, if it's a bigger lot, bigger subdivision, we're going to end up with street connections on all four sides at least, and in some cases more than that. It's just a matter of scale, so.
So, would that be provided, does there need to be more teeth in that one statement or would that be provided for in that?
I, I think that's already provided for. Now, we get, later Wesley suggests maybe that should be 30 lots instead of 20 lots. And his rationale is that the fire code allows you to have 30 lots on a cul-de-sac. I personally think less is better, but that is something that you probably want to think about. Plan development districts, plan development districts, it talks about having the overall density and allowing some flexibility to move things around and cluster things that you might not otherwise be able to do in the straight zoning that you might be in. I address low-impact development requirements or LID, you may, LID, you may be hearing some of that. And the idea is that we're trying to develop projects that are more environmentally sensitive and as much as anything are more, are better at handling water. So, the idea is conservation of natural resources, preserving riparian buffers, floodplains, et cetera, low-impact site design, reducing impervious cover and using natural features. Now, it says that we support this. There's not a lot of teeth to it. If we had to add teeth, we'd have to get a lot more detail about what we're going to require. I, I figured this was a good first step as we move toward more and more. And part of that reason is that there's not a lot of other, a lot of other people have kind of, sort of addressed this, but there's not a lot of people that have actually required it. So, this is just a step in that direction.
I think this is a good start, but yeah, I'd agree, we probably need more teeth in it. But I think this is a direction that Bastrop is our growth. We, we need to put that on the top of our list to make sure we execute to it.
Okay.
I, I second that. And I really wondered too, if specifically for the, the flooding related ones, specifically preserve riparian buffers, if there should be some distance set on that that will help with flood control. Is there later?
It's already in there.
We're getting there, okay.
It's eight o'clock. Did you want to take a stock? Okay. Okay. We addressed the Houston toad. Houston toad habitat has some specific development requirements that are imposed on us from outside. So, but basically, I'm just recognizing that and letting people know that, you know, that's, you know, we let people know when they come in for their pre-development meeting anyway, but this kind of puts it on paper of what the requirements are. And as it turns out, the rural subdivision design in a lot of cases will help meet the toad requirement, requirements. Wildfire. That might be a sensitive topic here. Some of you may have heard about a program called Fire Wise. It's a good program. I'm not sure it's really appropriate in all cases, but the concepts are good. And the idea is to build some defensible space around your houses. One of the things to do is to not build your house in an area that's going to burn. So, if you have the flexibility to move things around, you might leave the forest alone and then move your house. But otherwise, have a 30-foot defensible space around your house to be able to protect, you know, if the fire comes that you have some protection there. Did you have a question? Okay. We've gone over trees somewhat before, but do you want to plow into that?
I meant, I meant, let's see if, if the group wants to keep going or do we want to stop here? You want to do trees? Okay.
You know, basically, we've got trees, streets, lots and blocks, drainage and then utilities. Streets and drainage probably are the most time-consuming, the biggest areas.
Actually, I want to make an observation before we leave this segment.
Okay.
I spent five years trying to sell a $12 million piece of property near Pecola Vista. And I can tell you, the developers ran screaming away about the Houston toad. So, obviously, they didn't get the message that houses are good for Houston toads.
Houses built a certain way are, are good for the Houston toads, so. Okay. Tree preservation. We've talked about this before. We are, I know that there had been a run at this before, but I think this is kind of organized a little bit differently. And actually, there are other cities around that have approaches like this. What we want to do is to preserve trees, but only certain trees really get involved. And we kind of distinguish between basically good trees and bad trees or, or good trees and everything else. It only applies to undeveloped land and redevelopment, but not if that redevelopment doesn't change the footprint of the house. So, if you're doing stuff inside your house, we're not going to worry about the trees. Developments that have a completed application on file at the time that we adopt this ordinance are already grandfathered, so they're not affected. We're not going to go back on folks. Any construction that's already started isn't going to be affected. Property less than one acre that has a single-family house on it isn't affected. So, your house, if it's one acre or less, those are your trees. You can do what you want. It's only with the bigger developments and primarily when people are subdividing property is where we're really kind of getting into looking at the trees. Trees in the visibility triangle obviously are not protected because we often have to remove those so that we have adequate sightlines. Public utilities are exempt, so you know, you got to put the utilities in. Likewise, when you build a house, you got to have a place where the house goes, so that's usually exempt. We're not going to apply it to nursery trees. Some cities have tried to do that and that's kind of why we get such a backlash sometimes. Any tree that's determined to be diseased, dying, dead, or creating a nuisance or damaging a foundation can be removed, exempt from this ordinance. You can clear understory trees for soil borings, surveying, et cetera. Capital improvement projects are exempt. Trees in the right-of-way and adjacent utility easements are exempt. Trees located in drainage facilities. So, you can see there's a lot of trees, this ordinance doesn't affect any of those. So, then we define what are protected trees and those are any trees...
Excuse me, I have a question.
Sure.
It reads, any tree determined by a professional to be dead. So, does that mean if I have a dead tree, I can't remove it?
No, it says if it's dead, you can remove it. It's exempt from the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, good trees. Any tree that's 18 inches or larger and it's not a mesquite, bodark, ash juniper, mountain cedar, if you want to call it that, locust, tackberry, gumblamilia, box elder or cottonwood. We'll call those kind of the, the not-good trees. If you've got a big tree that's not one of those, then those are protected trees and they have certain standards to meet. Quality trees are any of those trees that are between 18 inches and 10 inches. Anything less than 10 inches are not covered by the ordinance. Also addresses tree stands. You can have quality tree stands that are contiguous groups, so you don't have to go out and measure every single tree. It might just make more sense to draw on the map and say, here's a tree stand of trees that we want to have protected. Then of those trees that we said were kind of the not-good trees, if they're 18 inches or larger, we call those large secondary trees. And there actually are some standards for how you might address protecting those. I would argue that you might not want to protect any of those, but there are people who, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I can remember early in my career, I wrote an environmental assessment and they were going to clear out a bunch of mesquite trees out near Sweetwater. And I said, but that's no big deal because, I didn't say it in that language, but it's no big deal because mesquiets are a problem. And the Fish and Wildlife Service wrote back and said, no, they look at all the habitat and stuff that mesquite provides, so. One person's trash tree is another person's habitat.
Is this, is this compatible with the criteria for protecting ourselves from additional wildfires? About, well, I'm asking this because Westlake enacted something similar and then discovered that they had prohibited their residents from protecting themselves because Westlake is prime for a fire.
Yeah. This allows the clearance of understory trees and basically any tree under 10 inches. So, that allows you to clear that defensible space around your house. So, I don't think that...
My understanding though is you could clear anything around your house as long as your property's less than an acre, right?
Yes.
So, you, you could cut down every tree on your lot if you wanted to, if you'd live on it more than an acre, right?
So, then it talks about permits. And again, we're mainly, we're, we're not trying to be the tree police where every property owner has to come in and get a permit for everything. We're mainly looking at developments. So, as people develop their property, we want to know what's out there and make sure that they don't go clear-cut everything and then say, well, I don't have to comply anymore. So, there's a review and approval process. There's a tree inventory required.
I think it would be who us, and I think kind of in line with some stuff Matt was saying earlier, that where, where you have permit, you know, or it says, a request for tree removal permit shall be submitted, blah, blah, blah. It would be nice to put a statement in there reminding folks that, you know, this does not apply to, you know, owners of properties less than one acre. Just if somebody were to scroll through looking, you know, like crap, I know this, I know this is, you know, enacted now. Do I need a permit if they scroll to that process, to that point, but don't read the rest of it? You know, they may feel like they have to. It may just be worth clarifying in that specific section that it doesn't apply to homeowners of, you know, in the, in the city last year.
Yeah, we can probably put a...
I don't know how you phrase it, but just something so that a layperson could read that and go, oh, that's not me.
Yeah, we can refer back up to all the exemptions.
Right.
Tree inventory will require that in most, in most cases, developer is going to have his 24-by-36 sheet and he's going to get the surveyor to locate all the trees greater than 10 inches on there by size and species and then put that in a table and we can go through that table and determine what needs to be protected, what can be removed and just mitigated, those kinds of things. And then they'll prepare a tree preservation plan that we'll review. Basically, most of that will be, the, the review of the tree preservation plan will be approved by staff, but we always give the applicant the opportunity to appeal it to you guys if, if they don't agree with that. So, that's what that number six is, the request for relief. And then we've got two classes. We've got preservation. We've got some trees that we want to preserve and we've got some trees that we want to mitigate. Because if you just allow everything to be mitigated, the developer will just write the check and clear everything out. Because I've seen that happen. So, we want to identify what we want to preserve and then allow them to remove the remainder, but just mitigate it by replanting trees that fits more in their development. So, there's a requirement in there for preservation and then the requirements in there for mitigation. And then there's a table that shows, and it's basically based on the size of your subdivision, how many of the trees have to be protected. And then, based on the size of your subdivision, how you mitigate the trees that you actually remove. And often you mitigate it... And often, you mitigate at a less rate than what's there. So you cut down 10 inches of trees, you may only have to plant five or six inches back, so.
Is this table, subdivision size, are those the lot sizes, or the...
No, that's the subdivision size.
So why do we have anything that's between a half-acre and one acre?
We have subdivisions that could be just like a two-lot subdivision. Could be one acre that's split into two pieces. And we're looking at the entire subdivision, not individual lots.
This would be one of those parts where I understand it a little bit better, and even I'm a little bit confused between that and the less-than-one-acre doesn't apply at some point, which is how it's structured.
But even in the event, you know, that they may not be able to mitigate everything, we do have a provision for payment of money in lieu of tree preservation that would be money used by the city to purchase trees and plant trees, preferably in an area close to the subdivision, it might be on street rights-of-way or in parks.
Is that the only use for that money the city can do? This isn't for like, tree maintenance elsewhere, is it always just for purchasing new trees?
Well, I kind of feel, and that's something the council will have to look at, but I'm a believer it ought to be on buying for replacement. I want to avoid creating this fund, and then it's just used solely for maintenance. I think maintenance needs to come out of the general fund.
How does a purchase program like that usually work? Like, is it planting trees in parks?
Yeah.
Or, I mean...
Parks or street rights-of-ways or other city property. We give the developer the right to come up with an alternative plan. If it meets the goal of the ordinance, and you could all could approve an alternate plan. We give the require, we give the option for credits. In our zoning ordinance, we have credits for landscaping requirements. Well, it doesn't make sense to plant two sets of trees. If you have to provide trees for landscaping, that counts towards your mitigation and vice versa. And then enforcement section, and then we get into the next section, which is easements. So Madam Chair, move on, or...
Okay, we're done with trees.
We're done with trees.
We're done with trees, what's the commission's pleasure? I think we're kind of, my eyes are glazing open. Do you have any idea when the council is, when they're trying to reschedule the joint meeting?
Well, I was told they were looking at early March, but early March is almost here, so.
Our next regular meeting is not until the end of March.
Correct.
And I think, I speak for the commission when I say we'd like to go through this in entirety before we meet with the council. So does the commission want to try and schedule a special meeting to finish this up? We might even get Melissa here if we do it earlier now. So why don't, can you get with us and maybe throw out some dates, send us some dates?
Okay, yeah.
That will work, work here, several different dates, and then we will send it back to you as early as we can and set a date for a special meeting.
Okay. And you're talking about in two weeks or so?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that work with everybody? All right, with that, I will adjourn the workshop and reconvene into regular commission meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Second. We are adjourned. Thank you for, everybody, for coming here and working so hard.
And just a reminder, if you have editorial comments, feel free to email them to me, and we'll try to incorporate those.